Like to begin the meeting, starting with number six on the four information page of the agenda. So this meeting is being recorded. Public participation, members of the public are given an opportunity to address councillors present at this meeting regarding agenda items at the discretion of the chair. Members of the public will also be given an opportunity to discuss town council activities, not on the current agenda after the close of tonight's meeting. The comments of members of the public and electors of the parish who speak before the start of the meeting or following the close of the meeting will not form part of the minutes of the meeting. Okay, so turning over now, we start with the the agenda. Can I just ask the members of the public who have joined us this evening? Would you like to speak to us? You'll have three minutes each if it's on to do with an item that's on the agenda. Would you would you like to address the meeting members of the public? Okay, also, I'll take that as a no. Thanks for joining us. Okay, so apologies for absence.
An apology is being received from councillor Tamlin, chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we all accept those apologies? Please raise a hand. Excellent, thank you. Agreements of the agenda between parts one and part two. So we do have items on part two of the agenda. And just to inform the members of the public that are here with us, part two of the agenda is items which are taken in the absence of the public and press on grounds that they're exempt information as defined in the Local Government Act. Okay, so at that point in the meeting, I shall ask you to leave. Okay, so are we all in favour of agreeing the agenda parts one and two? Please raise a hand.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. So declarations of interest, to declare any disclosable interests relating to the forthcoming items of business, if there are any. Are there any declarations? Yes, councillor Taylor, councillor Wiggly. Councillor Taylor, would you like to go ahead?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I would. We'll be declaring an interest in item 18 in part two.
Okay, thanks very much, councillor Wiggly.
Chairman, sorry, just to interject, can I just check on what grounds councillor Taylor is declaring his interest?
Okay.
Just muted yourself.
I have. On the, an interest, as I'm a member of Tynbridge District Council, the executive committee, the executive.
Okay. So an appendix B, thank you.
An appendix B, yeah.
Thank you. And councillor Wiggly, you had your hand raised.
Yes, thank you very much. Exactly the same as councillor Taylor. We, you know, it's prudent to just declare that interest as being part of the executive of Tynbridge District Council in the same way.
Okay, thank you very much. So do we all vote to accept those declarations of interest?
You just vote to note them, chairman.
Can we vote to note them, please? Please raise a hand. Thank you very much. So then, item four dispensations, which are on pages seven to 10 of our pack. And again, for these are concerning councillors Gary Taylor and councillor Martin Wiggly. Councillors, would you like to comment on your applications for dispensation? Councillor Wiggly, please go ahead.
And councillor Prowse also is indicating, chairman.
I keep getting there before I'm being allowed to unmute myself. Yes, thank you. Although we are declaring, although I am declaring an interest as being part of the executive within Tynbridge, this is really to do with relations between Dawlish and with Tynbridge. As such, it's nothing to do with my portfolio within Tynbridge. It's nothing to do with anything for which I'm responsible directly within Tynbridge. It is only to do with general overall finances in terms of the council. But then we are all concerned about that because we are all council taxpayers. So my dispensation request is really that whilst I'm formally acknowledging that there is a a potential there, and were it something that I was directly involved in as an executive member at Tynbridge and thus likely to be making any direct decisions on, then that would not be appropriate for me to necessarily be on both sides of the discussion. But in this particular case, I'm very much on the Dawlish side of the discussion, as I am in every discussion at Tynbridge. As a Tynbridge councillor, I represent the people of Dawlish. And I never represent Tynbridge, I represent the people of Dawlish. So whilst this is a declarable interest, I don't believe there is any conflict whatsoever.
Thank you very much, councillor Wiggly. Councillor Taylor, did you wish to comment on your dispensation request?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think councillor Martin Wiggly has summed it up very, very well. I think it is in the public interest that I take part in the Dawlish public interest that I take part. My experience on the matter concerned, I think, is also worth bringing to the table this evening. So I would ask that my dispensation is accepted.
Thank you very much, councillor Taylor. So I'm coming to you in a minute, councillor, in a second councillor Prowse. I see you've got your blue hand raised. But can we just vote on whether we accept those?
Chairman, you need to discuss them first, if there's a proposal or a second for each. And I would suggest you take each dispensation in turn.
Right, okay. So going for councillor Wiggly's dispensation request, please. Do I have a, any comments or do we go to propose that? Yes?
I think councillor Prowse is indicating that she wishes to speak.
Yes, councillor Prowse, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, yes. Before we do anything else and before we go into any vote, I'd just like to make this statement. I do not agree with this request to this council. I fully accept that they are PHs, that as PHs, both councillor Taylor and councillor Wiggly do not have direct involvement in this matter, that we will be discussing in part two. But both councillors are members of Tynbridge Executive. Whether they are Dawlish councillors first or last, they are still members of the Tynbridge Executive. And therefore will have had knowledge and have agreed to the matter that we are going to discuss. Any officer recommendation towards this matter would have already been put to the executive. And therefore I believe they have prior knowledge. And I believe for their safety as well as for our safety, they should not take part in this discussion in any way. And therefore I am proposing that they are not allowed to speak or vote in part two. Do I have a second?
Thank you councillor Prowse. Councillor Pedrick, you've got your blue hand raised, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's just clarification, please, because both councillors declared an interest. And I thought that indicated that they would, they would like to speak during the debate in the part two but not vote. Have I misunderstood that, please?
Thank you councillor Pedrick. They've both put in a request for dispensation so that they can speak and can vote on this, on this item, as I understand it.
That's right, chairman.
Yeah, in that case, in that case, Madam Chairman, I would like to second counter the process proposition, proposal rather.
Right, okay. Well, thank you. I do, I do hear what you're saying, that we've got the proposal and the second in opposition. However, listening to councillor Taylor and councillor Wiggly when they were explaining their request for dispensation, I believe what they say, that they do stand and do vote for Dawlish, as they were elected by Dawlish residents. And Dawlish, the interest of Dawlish and the interest of Dawlish residents does come first in their, in their, in their voting. And so I would like to propose that we accept that request for dispensation.
Chairman, you've already got a proposal on the table and obviously that proposal would be in direct competition with the one that's already on the table. So it stands that if the initial proposal fails, then a subsequent vote to confirm would likely pass. So it's not necessary at this stage.
Right, okay. So do I go for that or do I accept councillor Morehead?
Yes, it needs to be discussed first, chairman.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I've heard the reasons, I've read the paperwork. I would say that we have several members of this committee, this full council, who are also members of Tynbridge District Council. So would also, if they wish, be party to other, all sorts of information. My feeling is that this council is a corporate body. We are all equally responsible for spending public monies, for making decisions on behalf of the public here in the parish. And therefore I feel that everyone should have a right to take part and to speak and to vote at this meeting on item 18 or any other items. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Moreheads. Thank you. Councillor Wiggly, you've got your blue hand raised. Please go ahead.
Oh, sorry councillor Wiggly, you moved around on the screen, I couldn't find you then.
Well, sorry about that. Thank you, Chair. Yes, now, it's kind of interesting. I'm not quite sure what some people might think is discussed within the executive at Tynbridge. But I can guarantee you that details of things like we're going to talk about in part two are not discussed at that level. What goes on at the executive is normally matters of strategy. Occasionally, there are specific portfolio holder decisions that come through, but it's about policy, it's about strategy. So the details of individual actions like this will not have been discussed at at Tynbridge. And as such, it's not, it's not the case that there is any extra information or any other any other, any other motive. So it is entirely right. And I thank councillor Morehead for her support in that. But councillor Taylor and myself should be able to speak. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wiggly. Councillor Lowther, I saw you had your hand raised, I think your physical hand councillor Terry Lowther. Did you wish to say something?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Like councillor Pedrick, I, well, I'm not putting words into his mouth. I suspect he objected to this on basis that it puts those two councillors in a position which can be could be shown to be dangerous, if you like. I understand what they say about supporting Dawlish and I'm sure they do. However, I'm always a bit cautious about people sitting at two levels in the same organisation. And I think I'm inclined, therefore, to be against allowing them to speak and vote.
Okay, thank you councillor Lowther. Councillor Linda Pedrick, you've got your blue hand raised. Please go ahead.
When we're on committees, we have to declare an interest, even if we're a trustee or a council rep on an organisation and we're not allowed to vote. So I put this in the same category. They are too close to the decision-making committee at Tynbridge, the executive. So like, like any of us as a council rep, I don't think they should be allowed to vote on this.
Thank you councillor Pedrick. Councillor John Pedrick, you've got your blue hand raised.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Yes, councillor Morehead, Morehead rather, mentioned about other councillors being on this, on the town council. Yes, I'm the chairman of Tynbridge, but my role as Chair of Tynbridge requires me to be neutral. I'm not involved in any of the financial aspects whatsoever and I am strictly totally independent. So this will not influence the way I vote at all. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pedrick. Councillor Lyn Goodwin-Badbury, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, as I'm a member of Tynbridge District Council, I thought I would say something in the same vein as councillor Pedrick. But I also wanted to say that from the point of view of an executive, surely if the portfolios held by both Martin Wiggly and Gary Taylor, if they were appropriate and included the information and the details of the information we're going to be talking about in part two, then that absolutely would be relevant. I don't believe that's the case in this instance. So I find it very difficult to follow that, that they can't actually speak or potentially vote on the item. It could, in that sense, it should apply to all Tynbridge District councillors because although we are, not all of us are on the executive, we could potentially be in touch with officers or could have information that is related to this. So just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Goodwin-Badbury for clarifying that. And as is made clear in councillor Wiggly's dispensation request, this decision that is in discussion under part two of our agenda this evening is to do with a decision made by the portfolio holder for estates and assets. And neither councillor Wiggly nor councillor Taylor hold that position on the executive. So as councillor Goodwin-Badbury has just explained, it isn't under their portfolio what we're discussing tonight in part two. Councillor Rosie Dawson, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to support what councillor Goodwin-Badbury had said really. And that I'd be looking at two councillors who have a proven track record for putting the people of Dawlish first without the, putting aside, sorry, the agenda for Tynbridge District Council. And I think if they were not able to speak and vote and use their experience to guide them in this issue, then I'm not sure that any Tynbridge District Councilor should.
Thank you councillor Dawson. Councillor Lowther, please go ahead.
With respect to councillor Dawson, what she just said in fact would apply to all of us. I think we would all say that we put Dawlish first. I know councillor Prowse would be disturbed at the thought that she, in her long time on the council, has not always supported Dawlish. I think she has. So while I agree with what you say, I think that really would apply to all of us. So we get a position where none of us could speak and none of us could vote. That's obviously not realistic. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lowther. So to sum up then, as our town clerk has explained, we need to go for the oh, there's another blue hand just appeared. Go on councillor Taylor, quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did want to speak again because I think there's, there is a distinction in here, isn't there? The reason that I declared an interest was because of my role at Tynbridge, not in regard to the item itself. And on that basis, I think it is reasonable for me to speak and vote, just as it would with any other councillor at Tynbridge, who might find themselves, if it's, if it is the case that, and it's unlikely, if it is the case that an executive, at an executive committee, the executives would get to vote. Similarly, it would, if it went to Tynbridge District Council's full council, then other members here, other members of Tynbridge would get to, would get to vote also with, of course, the, with the chairman of Tynbridge having the casting vote. So from that point of view, I don't consider that any Tynbridge District councillors here this evening should, should be, should be barred from speaking and voting this evening on item 18.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Thank you. And so now we need to, because this is going on and we haven't even started the agenda yet. Councillor Prowse, please go quickly, keep it brief.
I didn't say district councillors, I said members of the executive. And you must remember that for 12 years I sat at district council and I do understand how the executive works. And whatever your portfolio hold is, you still have information on everyone's. I am not talking about other district councillors and that includes you, Madam Mayor. I am talking about two members of the executive and that is what I am asking.
Thank you councillor Prowse. Okay, so we've had the proposal in opposition to allowing councillor Taylor and councillor Wiggly to take part in the discussion and to vote on part two, the item in part two. And I've been instructed by a town clerk that we need to go for that vote. Is that correct?
Well, chairman, that's the proposal that's been made.
Okay, so that, I did make a proposal after, but you said that the proposal in opposition needed to be taken.
It's because, it's because the proposal's a direct negative, so it doesn't stand. Because it would stand to reason that if the original proposal failed, then the alternative would be to approve. So therefore you don't, you don't need to make that proposal, yeah.
Okay, okay. So all those in favour of opposing councillor Taylor and councillor Wiggly's dispensation requests?
Chairman, are you taking them separately or together?
Okay, I'll take them separately. Okay, so all those opting to oppose councillor Taylor's dispensation request in opposition, please raise your hands.
If members could just keep their hands up. One, two, three. That's six, chairman.
Thank you. So all those against opposing, please raise a hand.
One, two, three, four, five, six, chairman. So it's a tie.
Thank you. All those opting to
Chairman, you need to make your casting vote.
No, we have one vote short. We're one vote short.
So I have the casting vote?
No, Byron hasn't voted. Byron hasn't voted.
Okay, all those abstaining from opting for
One.
Okay, thank you.
So it's a chair time, it's a tie, chairman.
Okay, so do I use a casting vote?
It's your prerogative to do so, chairman, yes.
Right, thank you. So I shall use my casting vote as chair to allow councillor Taylor his dispensation request.
Okay, so that motion is lost.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on then, all those opting to oppose councillor Wiggly taking part in the discussion or voting on the item in part two, opposing, please raise a hand.
One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four. Six, chairman.
Thank you. All those voting against this proposal to oppose, to, sorry, I've got my
Yeah.
All those against this proposal, please raise a hand.
One, two, three, four. That's seven, chairman, so that's carried.
Thank you. So any abstentions to that? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so you know, so chairman, you now need to take a vote to approve.
Okay, so I now take a vote to approve.
The dispensations.
I now take a vote to approve the dispensation, so please raise a hand.
That's seven, chairman.
Okay, those against, please raise a hand.
That's six against.
Okay.
Any abstentions, chairman?
Any abstentions?
Sorry.
Any abstentions? Okay. So that's sorted then. So councillor Taylor and councillor Wiggly can take part in item two, item two of the agenda.
Part two, yes. Thank you, chairman.
Okay, thank you. So now moving on to item five on the agenda, to approve, sign and adopt the minutes of the town council meeting held on the 4th of November last month. Have you all had a chance to have a look at them? All those in favour of adopting those minutes, please raise a hand.
Thank you, chairman, that's unanimous.
Excellent, thank you. So then, item number six. So this is minutes of committees for adoption and we'll take them all together. So the first minutes of the civic amenities committee held on the 21st of October and the 18th of November. Can I have a proposal, please?
Chair, I would like to propose that bring forward the minutes of the civic amenities committee, 21st of October and 28th of November for adoption, please.
Chairman, it's the 18th. Sorry, there is a typo there. It should be the 18th, not the 28th.
I thought there was something a little bit off there. Thank you councillor Morehead. Okay, events committee, can I have a proposal, please?
The minutes of the events committee held on the 22nd of September.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Lowther. And then the finance and general, general purposes committee held on the 29th of October.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to propose the minutes of the finance general purposes committee meeting on the 29th of October for adoption, please.
Thank you councillor Wiggly. And the manor house and riverside centre committee held on the 9th of September.
We've had one since then. Since the 9th of September, but I would like to propose
Chairman, those minutes won't have been approved yet by the subsequent meeting.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to bring the minutes forward for adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And finally, the minutes of the planning committee held on the 22nd of October, please.
Madam Chair, I'd like to bring for consideration the minutes of the planning committee on the 22nd of October. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So all those in favour of adopting all of those minutes, please raise a hand.
Thank you, chairman, that's unanimous.
Excellent, thank you. So now moving on to the town clerk's report, please.
Thank you, chairman. Well, as members will know, we obviously went into a period of lockdown, followed very promptly by avian flu, which was obviously devastating for our black swans. We did lose 11, we went from 17 down to six. I would like to put on record for my part, my thanks to our waterfowl wardens for working so well with the national agencies that became involved as part of that. Myself being part of the task force, the incident management task force. And I would, if appropriate, chairman, like to propose through yourself that we express our thanks to those agencies because that we express our thanks to those agencies because without them, and that's Public Health England, DEFRA, the Animal Plant Health Agency, Teambridge in Devon County, we wouldn't have been able to have managed the situation in terms of our media responses, our infection control. And I'm very grateful for the support we received as an organisation and as officers from them and also Bayview vets in the town as well for helping. So if that's possible, Chairman, I'd like to put that through yourself. The town council has now reopened from today following the ending of the national lockdown. And obviously, now that we're in tier two, we have reopened the building to wider use and hiring, but in line with the new regulations, the town council reception has reopened to in-person inquiries from 9:30 to 1:30, but we're still contactable by email and phone throughout the whole day. I attended a meeting of the Teenest Coastal Partnership towards the end of November, which was quite interesting. They're not sure whether the Environment Agency for next year will be able to issue the beach designations such as the blue flag for 2021, as usually they undertake approximately 10 tests throughout the year. And because of COVID, they've only managed three or four so far. They're waiting for further information from them on that, so we're not sure if we'll be getting those designations. The benches along King's Walk that were removed for the new sea wall, they face a 12-week lead time, but they are on order and it is hoped that they will be installed in January. The cladding of the rear-facing wall, that's the wall-facing marine parade, in an actual stone effect is underway and almost complete. And it's anticipated that the low-level lighting to King's Walk will be installed in March by Network Rail. So things are moving on well there. And the only other thing to say is, as you'll see behind myself and Angie, and thanks to her hard work, we have our splendid Christmas tree, which I think you'll all agree really makes a nice touch to the lawn. So there it is in all its glory, but I'd encourage everybody to go and have a look. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Andrew. Thank you. So we had your proposal for the letter of thanks to all the different agencies that helped us. And I'm happy to take that to a vote now. So please, good old councillors, raise a hand if you're happy to support that.
Thank you, Chairman, that's unanimous.
That's excellent, thank you. And can we now vote to approve the town clerk's report, please?
Thank you, Chairman. I think councillor Wiggly's indicating to speak as well.
Thank you, councillor Wiggly. Please go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to return and say thank you to the clerk for managing all those situations and working as a lynchpin in all of that. And it was a difficult time and he did well and the team did well. And it must have been traumatic for everybody. So thank you very much for all of your efforts through all of that time.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wiggly. Thank you. So now moving on to my report. So the Dawlish poppy wall for remembrance grew so many hand-knitted and crocheted poppies that by Remembrance Day last month, it looked a very splendid memorial to the fallen. Many thanks to all who donated their time and their poppies. And while quite different to Remembrance Sundays in previous years, I was honoured to participate in the remembrance event in the memorial gardens. The devastating loss of our five young signets, together with six adults and juvenile black swans to avian flu was heartbreaking. Last week, my heart jumped with joy at seeing the video of the daddy black swans first swim back on the brook after being nursed with care in isolation by our two waterfowl wardens. A big thank you to them for all their care and attention and for following the guidance and training from DEFRA and the Chief Veterinary Officer. I'd like to say a big thank you to the kind members of public who have sent get well cards to the swans and who have donated generously to the care of our waterfowl and to future restocking of our black swans. It's now beginning to look a lot like Christmas in Dawlish. The local shop windows are full of Christmas goodies and illuminated with beautiful lights. Please shop local if you can and support our traders. With just four weeks to go and the end of second lockdown today, it's starting to feel a lot like Christmas too. So a big thank you to all key workers and carers and a big thank you to all involved in helping Dawlish. With best and stay safe wishes for our fans. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to the county councillors' reports. We have received a report from councillor Catworthy. I'm sure you've all had a chance to have a look at that. Are there any questions arising from that? Yes. First of all, Andrew.
Thank you, Chairman. I've just had a subsequent update from the county councillor to say that in regards to the A379, and this is the county councillor speaking, I've been contacted about the traffic lights on Timothile close to plantation terrace. And just to let you know, they will be in place until the 18th of December as contractors are rock bolting to secure the road and I expect there will be some delays. So he just wanted that to be made aware to members. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Heath, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And it was just a question I would have asked if he'd been here, but I'm wondering if we can perhaps note it to ask him either by email or next time. We did raise a number of issues that the highways were going to look into. One being the 379 again, up from Smugglers Inn about having double white lines. Another incident reported by a local resident, a car overtaking on the wrong side of the road at a hump there. I think that's quite urgent. Are we looking to if the council, Devon County Council, is actually looking at this and assessing it? Because at the moment, there's been no feedback whatsoever. So could we ask our councillor where it's got to? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Heath. Thank you. And yes, that is an urgent thing that needs looking at. Councillor Powers, please go ahead.
Through you, Madam Mayor, councillor Heath, I do understand that they're looking at reducing the speed limit along there as well, which is something that we've requested. And I must say, it is not helped by people who have things delivered along Tinmouth Road, you know, from number four up towards the Smugglers, when the vans just happen to pull in there to pop over the road, deliver a parcel. I have to say, I used to live there and one day I was sitting in the window and I saw a man killed when he was tossed into the air. So I have to say, it's a very dangerous spot.
Thank you, councillor Powers. And it is an urgent issue that we ask councillor, our county councillor, to look at. Thank you. Any other councillors wishing to speak? Councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just in response and in addition, this was raised through the civic amenities town and parish audit. It has been copied to councillor Catworthy and to the local beat manager who supports the proposal for these extra lines. So we can just hope now that this goes forward in the forthcoming year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Morehead. Okay, so moving on then to district councillors' reports. There haven't been any circulated, but does any district councillor wish to speak briefly? Councillor Linda Pedrick, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A quick update on the children's trail in the play park. We are progressing really well with the children's trail and play park. We've actually gone out to consultation to the schools and I'm really, really pleasantly surprised about the response that we've had. It's been really good. The schools have been amazing. They've come straight back to me with their responses. We are having a meeting to actually start to discuss the ideas for what should be within the project. But I will give a fuller report in January just to update everybody as to what's happened with it this year. Secondly, this week I've delivered a letter that the police have sent to us and it's been gone out on Facebook. And it's about professional beggars targeting Timoth and Dawlish and Newton Abbott. So we've been informed that that's happening and I've delivered this to all the shops. And what they're saying, if you believe that a person is genuinely homeless or in need of help and support, please report this through Streetlink. And the details are on the letter, which there's a copy of it in the office at the agenda. And by reporting through Streetlink, you will be giving that person the best chance of finding a roof over their head. So we need to start working with the police on this and try to find out better ways of managing the situation. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pedrick. Councillor John Pedrick, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just a couple of things as a district councillor. As you know, I'm the chairman of Teambridge and my civic duties have been few and far between since the pandemic started. But I have represented Teambridge on two occasions and that was laying a wreath at the Newton Abbott War Memorial on Remembrance Day and also one at the Dawlish War Memorial. Additionally, I did mention last month that Teambridge is going to carry out a review of the impact of COVID-19 within the district on residents and businesses and so on. They decided that we would focus on three areas, coastal towns, rural and urban areas. I was asked to lead on one of the groups and we've actually sent out a survey to businesses, charities and also councils as well, asking them to complete the online survey. They are drifting back very, very slowly. The survey closes on the 5th of December. The survey has early indications of that we've not had that many returned to us quite frankly. Hopefully, there will be a little spurt before the 5th of December. The results will then go to full council on the 14th of January. That's the Teambridge Full Council. And I have to give a brief presentation to overview and scrutiny too on the 11th of this month. Additionally, when I chaired their meeting at Teambridge on the 23rd of November, I thought it wise to actually thank our staff, the Teambridge staff. And I would also like to pass on our thanks, hopefully on behalf of our members of the Dawlish Town Council today, to our clerk to pass on to our staff and thank them for their efforts during this time of crisis. When we are dealing with isolation and its associated stresses, our staff deserve recognition for their dedication towards navigating towards a new normal and have continued to carry out their jobs with the complications of working in different environments and implementing new safety measures whilst managing the family needs. So thank you to all our staff as well at Dawlish Town Council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pedrick. Thank you. Any others? I can't see any blue hands raised, so can't see any physical hands raised either. Okay, so moving on to...
Sorry, Chairman, just going to vote to note the report, please.
Oh, right, okay. Can we raise a hand to note both councillor Pedrick's reports, please?
Thank you, that's unanimous.
Thank you. So town councillors' reports, we've heard a good report circulated by councillor Carol Tamlin to us, which has gone around. I'm hoping that you've all read that. So that's good. I can see two blue hands raised. Councillor Dawson, please go ahead.
I thought councillor Prowse was just before me, but I'll go ahead if you're happy. Just really briefly, actually, to feedback, obviously, I'm the rep for the CCG and they've been having their consultation period on the future of coastal health has now closed. There've been two meetings since in the last two weeks totaling of about five hours, where we've kind of looked at the process and what happened to that consultation, the level of engagement. So just for your information, really, level of engagement was 6%. Of people who received information from the CCG engaged with the process, which I felt was quite low, but they assure me is a reasonable level for a health consultation. I'm not sure what that says. And they then also spent three hours going through different alternatives that have been brought up by members of the public. So I will continue to feedback as and when I hear results.
Thank you very much, councillor Dawson. Councillor Powers, please go ahead.
Sorry, a bit slow with this unmuting and I'm not used to being silent. I would just like to thank councillor John Pedrick for the wishes he has for the staff. I can assure you that as chairman of staffing, through Andrew, we have done all that is necessary and we are very grateful for the support of all our staff. It's all been very difficult, but they've done very well. The only other thing I would like to say is that I did send out an email to all councillors as a result of the country file report the other Sunday. I do note that Teambridge are planting trees all over the place and I would like to ask the chairman of civic amenities if we can bring this subject up at the next meeting because I think this is the time, especially as I was told by the powers that be and the great beyond that although we might find a vaccine for COVID, we haven't got a vaccine for the planet. So anything we can do must help. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Powers. And councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I might just respond in a minor way. Yes, it's a great concern. I understood when the tree planting happened very early in the year that there are other sites, particularly at Sandy Lane in the Teambridges sites and they're assisted, of course, by Woodland Trust. Personally, I've been growing some trees for years and I have only today offered them yet again for some planting. So we can only hope. I do also hope that there is going to be a replacement tree in the lawn at some stage because we've got a gap and another one is in serious trouble. So let's just hope. If any of us have got the room, the thing to do is plant a tree that fits the space you've got. Anything helps. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Morehead. I have actually got three trees coming on order for my front garden. So, but thank you, I do, I do note what you've said. So councillor Linda Pedrick, please keep it brief. Go ahead.
Just to say that we did plant Dawlish Water Rotary. We did plant a lot of trees at Sandy Lane and I think they may have more trees, councillor Morehead. So if you speak to Johnny, might be able to put you in touch with someone.
Thank you, councillor Pedrick. Any other town councillors' reports? Councillor Heath, please go ahead.
It isn't so much a report, it's just backing what councillor Prowse said about the trees. I have written to her as well, which has been acknowledged. But I suggested that we also look at the countryside park. Having walked there this week, there's many, many gaps we could put more trees in. They seem to have stopped. What they have done is excellent with lots of little mini copses, but I believe the lower section could have a lot of complete mini cops and will help the ground there as the water runs down the bottom. So they're signed to be aware of it and if anyone's got any influence there, try to get them to have a look at that. And also there's some dieback trees in those mini copses near the fences, for whatever reason, which probably need a replant, which isn't unusual when you plant new trees and often the third die in the first two or three years. So there is a lot more, probably at least 100 trees we could put in there. That would make an impact locally. And I would actually recommend we think about that one. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Heath. Thank you. Can we just vote to approve the town councillors' reports? Please raise a hand.
Thank you, Chairman, that's unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, so now moving on to item number 12 on the agenda, the brook lights. So the town council is being asked to consider agreeing the additional funded required to enable the brook lights to be switched on for the, for this winter season. And also agreeing in principle that the town clerk begin negotiations with Teanbridge District Council for the transfer of ownership of the brook lights asset to the town council for operation in the future. So thank you very much for bringing this to the agenda and for preparing the reports. And as we all know, we've been asked several times by local residents and by visitors and by the traders about when our beautiful coloured brook lights are, are going to be coming back. And for me, I believe that the, the coloured lights are the cherry on the cake for Dawlish. They're, they're so wonderful, so attractive. Um, councillor Dawson, I think you've got your hand up raised. Um, raised up first, sorry. Sorry, no, it's councillor John Pedrick. I'm looking at the list. Please go ahead. You had your hand raised first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I assume that as there are two parts to this agenda item, we will discuss each part individually, part A and then go on to part B. So this is part A initially from me. The brook lights have been in place for many decades, initially provided by Dawlish Urban District Council and since the mid 70s by Teanbridge District Council. The costs associated with operating and maintaining the lights has always been embraced with an oil council tax. Now we're being asked to cover the cost from our Dawlish Town Council budget, which means that we are effectively going to pay for them twice. I believe that Dawlish is being treated unfairly with this double taxation. I have no wish to behave like Scrooge at this time of the year and agree that the light should be switched on for the festive season, which will give the town a lift during these difficult times. But I can't help but wonder, who has made this decision? Could it be the officers with the agreement of the portfolio holder? And if so, why weren't we consulted? Our events and projects manager contacted Teanbridge in August and wasn't able to obtain a positive response. Why is it now at the 11th hour that we are advised that if you want the lights on, you'll have to pay for them? The brook lights are a tourist attraction that benefits Teanbridge because visitors to Dawlish Park and Teanbridge car parks and Teanbridge benefits from the revenue. I think we should write a strongly worded letter to Teanbridge and ask why and how this decision's to be made. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pedrick. Thank you for, for those comments. Councillor Dawson, you're next in the blue hand list. Please go ahead.
Uh, reiterating some of what councillor John Pedrick said really, I'm really disappointed in Teanbridge and, uh, the way that Dawlish has been treated since the beginning of the, this, uh, lights going off fiasco. We know that what the impact has, the lights have, uh, on our season. Uh, in this, we, we need to have some collaboration with Teanbridge and I'm really, uh, very despondent at the moment that there hasn't been communication from day one or from before actually with Teanbridge, uh, from Teanbridge. Um, and that as councillor Pedrick says, at the last minute now, um, there's even more money to consider paying. Um, I absolutely think the light should be going on. I would, in these times, want to keep them on actually right up until spring because I think it makes a huge difference in a town when we're going through a particular difficult time as a community. Um, but I think going forward, I'd agree with councillor Pedrick's, um, strongly worded letter about needing some collaboration here. We put on amazing events that fill the car parks that they benefit from, um, as a, as a district council. Um, and I'd, I'd really like to know where this, this decision came from and why it didn't include any communication, uh, with us as a council at all.
Thank you councillor Dawson. Thank you for those comments. Councillor Morehead is next in the blue hand list. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this saga has been, um, brought up, discussed and agreements made by the Civic Communities Committee who are concerned with the, this sort of, um, amenity, using it again, but it, as everyone has said, it's vital to this town. It's also at this moment even more important than ever because we need to get people into the town to support our businesses as well as cheering up everyone who's suffering under the COVID situation. We had agreed, as you'll see from this report, to already, we had been asked to, uh, contribute, well, to pay, I think it was the whole survey cost at the time. Um, and we agreed, as it says here, to funding the energy cost to 150 and half of the survey costs at 400 with Teanbridge paying the rest. Now, this, I think, to ask us for this cost of £1,520 is almost holding us to ransom. We are very close to Christmas. We're in the dark, dark days of winter. We need to get, to try to, to revive the town and revive everyone's spirits. I really think this is awful. Um, that's my comment about the first part and the second part, in case I don't get the chance again to say anything. Um, I don't see that at this point we, we should be negotiating with Teanbridge. We don't know any costs, we don't know the reasons, we have no idea what we've been letting ourselves in for. But I think, I really do feel that we are being held to ransom. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morehead. Thank you. Um, councillor Linda Pedrick, you're, you're next in the blue hand queue. Please go ahead.
I would reiterate everything that's gone before really. We do need the, the lights during the winter. They are part of Dawlish. We're, we're known for those lights. Um, I don't think we should be talking to Teanbridge about taking them on permanently. The only way that should be happening is if, with anything, if you take anything over, it's made fit for purpose and it's in a good state when you take it over. The only way that I think we could consider doing anything like that were if all the lights were changed to LED. You know, we've, the carbon footprint of those lights must be astronomical. So if they were changed to, um, LED, which would be cheaper and better for the environment and also that they were in tip-top condition, that would be the only time I would even think of starting to negotiate with Teanbridge. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Linda Pedrick. Thank you. Um, councillor Terry Lautha, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, this is really turning into a chorus of people saying the same thing, but I'm, I'm, I'm going to resist the temptation to just, just say, yes, I agree, because I do agree. I think it's atrocious. Um, this is, as John Pedrick says, not the right time to be cutting silly pennies, you know. This is, in the, in the reality of, of life, this is not a small fortune. It's very much, very more important to Dawlish and Teanbridge than it is just counting the few pennies that's involved. Um, I, I think it's atrocious that you haven't thought about it. And I worry that maybe they're going to start thinking of other, um, ridiculous, uh, prosion of costs as well. I'm very much opposed paying this, uh, and certainly I do agree with paying, sending well after and saying, come on lads, go up. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lautha. Councillor Lisa Main, please go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, we have already discussed this at CIC and I said then that I'm absolutely disgusted that all summer we've moaned and groaned that the lights haven't been on. When now we're being asked to pay to put them on, why weren't we asked then to put them on in the middle of the summer when people were here and could see it? We also are, um, gonna put them on and I hope that if we pay, then they're gonna stay on and not get switched off again. But going back to, uh, the second item, a Timoth being asked to pay for their lights or do they already, do they already pay for them? I'd be really interested. Yes, Andrew?
Yeah, sorry Chairman, I think I've made a note, a few points to, um, come back to members on and that will be one of them. So if, if I may come back at the end Chairman-
Okay.
Have some more updates.
Okay, that, that was really what I wanted to know, if Dawlish were being asked and Timoth weren't, or if Timoth was being asked as well. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Main. Um, so councillor Taylor, you're next in the queue. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, all I'm going to say is I agree with all of the foregoing and I'm looking forward to hearing from the town clerk.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Wiggley, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you Chair. Well, I too agree with all of the, uh, all of the points coming up to this. It is essential that we get these lights on. I think it's been done in a very poor way. And whilst, uh, one slight difference, I, I do think that we should be talking to Teanbridge and discovering what situation there might be. I certainly wouldn't suggest that we take these on without knowing the full costs and full scale and full scope. But I do think we should be negotiating with them to see what sort of situation it actually might be. Because we don't know until we start that negotiation, we can't make any decision. But we should not be taking a decision to, uh, take on anything without understanding the full situation and the full involvement of what is there. So, um, I would, um, uh, uh, subject perhaps to something the town clerk may say, but I would propose that we go ahead and, um, get these lights switched on and put the money in to actually get them on. That we start the discussions with Teanbridge, but we do not commit at this point to taking over the lights until we have the results of those discussions and we know them and can look at what the financial implication of it is. Because we certainly don't want to take it on, but we want to make sure that these lights go on, that they stay on and that this council is in control of when those lights are on. So we're not subject to random switching them off again.
Thank you councillor Wiggley. That's very well said. Um, thank you. Um, councillor Martin Heath, you're next in the blue hand queues. Please go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Chair. It's more or less all been said and I do agree with every speaker. And just a little bit of clarification, which I'm sure our town clerk was about to give us anyway. Um, we're actually saying in, in negotiations with Teanbridge, is it council, part B? Um, are they actually saying to us, we are not going to fund it anymore? You take it over or they switch off? Or are they not being so direct as that? Because I'm not quite clear what they're saying. Because it, when you read that actual part B, it looks like we're asking them to take it over. So I just want a bit of clarity, which way around is it coming and how far it's got to the situation where they won't go on at all if we don't take it on? Thank you.
Chairman, if I may, I'll address that with everything else, if that's okay. If councillor Heath is happy with that.
Thank you. Okay, so you're, you're, you're addressed that at the end after councillor Dawson and councillor Morehead have spoken. Okay. Um, councillor Dawson, please go ahead.
I think councillor John Pedrick was ahead of me.
Oh, the blue hands are moving. Right, councillor John Pedrick, please go ahead.
Thank you. I, I mean, initially I thought we were looking at both of these, uh, items, A and B separately. But a number of members have commented on part B of this as well, so I'm going to. Because regarding the transfer of the ownership of the lights, um, yet again, it's double taxation. It could be argued that the Teanbridge pot of money accumulates some taxes paid by every household across Teanbridge and the residents of Teanbridge, Timoth don't benefit from our brook lights. But by the same token, Dawlish doesn't benefit from the too extensive play park areas in Timoth. Our brook lights, uh, like the Timoth play areas, attract tourists who pay to park and enjoy the experiences of our coastal towns. And that is why TDC should continue to cover the cost of provision of decorative lighting along the brook. The existing lighting, I believe, uses filament bulbs. This has been mentioned earlier, but I, I was thinking about it as well. The running costs are quite high and incongruent with our recently published commitment to reduce our carbon footprint. Clearly the lights need to be upgraded to LED, which will be costly, maybe between 10 and 20,000 pounds, depending on the operating functions of the new system. This will inevitably impact on our council tax preset if we take them on. Our preset this year is 479,000. Next year however, we anticipate a slight decrease of about 10,000 pounds. If we factor in the proposed acquisition of the brook lights, effectively this means that we will possibly have to find an additional 25,000 pounds next year. This can be achieved by cutting back on some of the services we currently deliver or passing on the cost to our residents. 25,000 pounds divided by the 6,500 dwellings in, within the Dawlish parish equally, it equals approximately an increase of four pound per household on council tax. We are currently in the midst of a pandemic, one of the worst that mankind has ever known. Recently 25,000 redundancies in the retail trade have been announced this week. This is not the time to increase council tax. I suggest we arrange an urgent meeting with the officers and portfolio holder. Some years ago, we found this approach helpful when Teanbridge advised that a number of public tourneys would close unless we took them on. I accompanied councillor Terry Lautha and councillor Cleyson to TDC, where we met with the officers and the portfolio holder and we sat eyeball to eyeball and reached a satisfactory compromise. And that's what we need to do again. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pedrick. Okay, so councillor Dawson, please go ahead.
I just wanted to shoot back to councillor Wiggley's proposal and just ask whether or not that was including the very strongly worded letter about collaboration and disappointment in that. Um, if it did, and as you said, subject to any new information come from the town clerk, I would have liked to second your proposal.
Thank you councillor Dawson. Um, can I ask Andrew if you wish to speak now? Um, because councillor Morehead and councillor Prowse, I believe you've already spoken on these. Okay, so first in line then councillor Prowse, please go ahead.
Uh, all I was going to say was that, um, I'm afraid I don't agree with, uh, switching on the lights and paying money. Uh, in my experience legally, that once you do something like this, you find yourself open to becoming liable for the rest of the time. And I would like to say, uh, the comment was made about us trying to negotiate with Teanbridge. I'm well aware that Angie has been trying very hard since the summer to get some answers and I, and I think that we should take note that to date she has been unable to get satisfactory answers. Um, I would like to think that, um, councillors may get a bit further along the line, but I find it quite sad that something that was asked back in the summer, we are still discussing in December.
Thank you councillor Prowse. Um, councillor Morehead, please go ahead. Please keep it brief. We're really racing through time. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will keep it brief. I would just like to remind people that we, civic amenities had gone through all of this uh, with, um, Angie who's been pursuing the whole saga right from the beginning when we discovered the lights were off. Um, and we have already recommended that we contribute 550 pounds towards costs to put them back on and get them surveyed. Uh, so in all, uh, we would be required then maybe to pay the full survey cost, which was 800, um, plus the 150, plus 1,520. Out of the blue, I think it's, it's just ridiculous, but I would just ask, and I'm sure the clerk has got the answer. Um, somebody mentioned, uh, was Timoth having the same request made? And I would also ask, are Timoth also responsible for the decorative lighting at Dawlish Warren? And if so, are they also having a similar request made? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morehead. Um, so I, Andrew, would you like to answer those points?
Uh, yes, Chairman, it's councillor Pedrick wanting to go perform as it looks as though he is, Chairman.
Okay councillor Pedrick, is it, is it something new?
I, I, I really think it is important, Madam Mayor, and I'll go ahead if you don't mind, please. We've had a proposal that we, we accept this 2,000 pound penalty to have the lights on. I don't think we should. I think we should, as I say, a strongly worded letter or an email tomorrow to Teanbridge saying, we're not happy about this. If the lights are on, leave them on and then we can discuss it later. But we should not be held to ransom for 2,000 pounds. We're talking about 2,000 pounds of taxpayers' money. The people in Dawlish are paying that 2,000 pounds. I don't think they should. Thank you. I would, so I would like to propose an amendment, sorry, that, because we have a proposal that we accept the 2,000 pounds. It's been seconded. I propose an amendment. There will be a strongly worded email very quickly and then, and then we don't, we, we decide not to pay the 2,000 pounds at this stage. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pedrick. Councillor Lowther, you had your hands raised first.
I'm just...
Your physical hand.
Yes, yes, I would like to second that proposal.
Thank you, councillor Lowther. So councillor Gary Taylor, you've got your blue hand raised. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It wasn't my understanding, actually, that councillor Wiggley wanted this full amount to be paid. I would certainly be in favour of supporting the view of the CAC that was made, that we did contribute the £150 to the cost of the electricity and the half the cost of the survey. And I think I never thought that would be showing good faith enough in wanting to continue having the lights. But there was a proviso, of course, to that proposal at CAC, and that was that the lights, if you like, the switching on of the lights and how long the lights are on for was down to Dawlish to control, not Teambridge. I think I was always very sad when the lights went off after Christmas, as sad as I am now that they're not on yet, that they didn't stay on through those cold, dark evenings of January and February and March. So I think in giving control to Dawlish, I think that the money that was proposed for £150 and £400 should be taken in good faith by Teambridge as a way forward. So if councillor Wiggley proposed a higher sum than that, then I have a further proposal that we put the money on the table that was agreed at CAC and ask then Teambridge to come to the table to discuss the future of the lights.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. Thank you. Can I just ask Andrew, which order do I take these in for clarification, please?
Oh, Chairman, when it comes to it, I would suggest you take councillor Wiggley's proposal, as it was made first and Julie seconded. Councillor John Pedrick made the amendment essentially that we, in adding that we write a letter, strongly worded letter, but also that we don't approve the funding. So almost in itself, it's a direct negative. So again, we're in a similar situation as before. But if councillor Wiggley's motion failed, then it would obviously fall to the next proposal by councillor Pedrick at that point. However, councillor Wiggley may like to accept that a strongly worded letter goes in together with his proposal, which I think he indicated to councillor Dawson was the case. I wonder, Chairman, if it might be helpful if I just provide an update and answer some of the points that have been made at this point?
Please, please do. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Obviously, back in the summer, we were first alerted to the fact that the lights had been switched off. And we'd had a couple of tourists, actually, phoning the town council to ask when would be an appropriate time to go and stand by the brook to have a photo taken when the lights came on. And to our knowledge, we believed the lights to be on, but lo and behold, they weren't. And after making inquiries of Teambridge, we were told that, no, they had been turned off. And when we asked as to why, we were told that it was because of the COVID pandemic and it was part of a cost-saving exercise. It wasn't just Dawlish, it was also Sholden and Timmouth had had the promenade lights and cutinery lights turned off as well. As has already been said, we have been trying for some time to ascertain the exact costs of running the lights and getting them switched back on to find out what would need to be done to get them back on, because we acknowledge that they're an important part of the town. The initial correspondence from Teambridge indicated that average energy costs are approximately £150 for the winter season and approximately £300 to £400 for the entire year. There was then the survey cost of £800. And the average remedial maintenance cost over approximately the last six years, and I haven't got the amount in front of me, was about £2,200. And last year, the maintenance had cost £6,100, but that was a one-off year, but the average still worked out at £2,200. It was my suggestion that we took it to CAC, and I suggested that I didn't think it was appropriate that this council stump up the whole cost, given that it's a service Teambridge provided, but we might want to go somewhere to making a contribution. And I suggested we pay for the energy costs, and I suggested we pay the £800, but we didn't touch the £2,200 because maintenance isn't part of our remit. CAC suggested that we go back with an offer of £150 plus the £400, so £550, which we did. Or which I did, sorry. And the response back was to advise that the survey had been undertaken. And the works required was that 120 lamps needed to be replaced and a small number of, there were a small number of defective globes. And also eight floodlights that had failed needed replacing. And therefore, the cost of that would be £1,520 with a lead-in time for materials of three to four days. Now, it was my impression initially that when the original costs had been made aware to us, Teambridge were asking for a contribution. And that, to me, suggested they weren't looking for the full amount. They've now come back to us to say that they are not in a position to fund the work. And they would welcome comments on whether this is something the town council would like to take on. I did go back to say, are we saying it's £550, as was already agreed, in addition to this £1,520? And they have confirmed that they would be looking for a contribution of £550 towards the testing and power, along with the £1,520 for remedial works to the lights. They go on to say that unfortunately, one of the consequences of the financial impact of the lockdown was the significant reduction to the council's repairs and maintenance budget, which would have otherwise covered the cost. I've also been made aware that the cutinery lights in Timmouth are to be switched back on on the 6th of December. And the town council there has not been approached to make a contribution. And I did take Teambridge to task on this, as it didn't seem fair. The response was that the lights there are already LED. The access points to the switches were much more accessible than those on the brook. And therefore, it was much easier for them to be turned on. In addition, members, the part B of your recommendation, I thought if we are going to pay for remedial works to be undertaken, then it would seem that if they're not going to be switched on going forward unless a contribution is made by us, it would seem sensible that they become our asset and we have full control over them. I've suggested to Teambridge how we might do that. They would be happy to give us a licence. Obviously, further negotiations would need to be made, or a lease. If we were to go for a lease, it would include the poles and the concrete foundations that go into the brook, which may prove tricky, whereas a licence would exclude the poles but allow us control of what is hung from them. But that is obviously something that would be looked at in more detail going forward. But initially, this is what is in front of you, that it is essentially if we do not make this payment, the lights will not be switched on. And therefore, I didn't feel it was a decision I could take on my own, and I needed a steer from members.
Disgusting. Thank you very much, Andrew, for all that information. Thank you. And it does sound unfair that Timmouth's lights are going to be switched back on next week, already arranged.
Yeah, Chairman, sorry, there was just one other point to mention. If the lights on the brook were to be upgraded to LED, on figures obtained by Teambridge, we would be looking at a cost of between £20,000 and £25,000. Now, obviously, we would look to go and obtain additional quotes, but that's the ballpark figure that we have been provided to upgrade the lights to full LEDs.
Right, okay, thank you. And that's the one-off cost for changing them to LED?
That would be the one-off cost for changing them to LED, which obviously isn't included at this stage.
Right, okay, thank you. So two further blue hands raised. Please go ahead, councillor Pedrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I mean, this gets more and more outrageous, actually, because I have seen the lights switched on recently, so they must be working.
That was the testing, Chairman.
Well, okay, so they've been tested and they're okay. So why do we have to replace so many bulbs? If they're working to a degree, why can't we just make the best of it at the moment? And maybe make a small contribution of £550, as CAC agree, but I don't think we should pay £1,500 in addition to that. We're really being held to ransom here. So I would happily amend, sorry, I would happily amend my proposal to say that we don't pay the £2,000, but we pay £550 and we get the lights switched on. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pedrick. All these blue hands that are going up, we need to make a decision soon because we're running out of time. Martin Heath, councillor Heath, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Very quickly clarifying again, the survey said there was 130, 50 light bulbs that were gone, needed replacing. Just a question, possibly Andrew may know or may have to ask this question. If they were replaced, are they talking about replacing them with an ordinary condensing bulb or LEDs? Because there's nothing stopping what does go wrong, like in our own houses, being replaced as an LED as a gradual update. I don't necessarily think we have to pay £25,000 for the whole lot done in one go. It's not very cost-effective. Yes, it's more electricity, but you have to balance the two. So could we ask the council, is it possible, if we do go ahead with this, we can have what is gone to be replaced with LEDs and see what sort of answer we get?
Certainly, certainly ask that.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you. Councillor Lisa Main, please go ahead.
I'm just absolutely gobsmacked, because Timmouth has had investment in the past and has got the right lighting. We now, as Dawlish, poor Dawlish is going to suffer and have to pay to put our own on. And as for lighting at Dawlish Warren, it's been on all, I think it was forgotten to be switched off, to be honest, but it's been on all summer. And as I look out my window now, it's switched on. And nobody's walking past there. There may be two or three people walk up and look at those lights in the whole of the evening, whereas Dawlish, everybody drives by, everybody looks at it. I think it's disgusting. I'm really, really upset over this.
Thank you, councillor Main. Yes, I feel that Dawlish is being treated as a poor relation by Teambridge with this Christmas lights, with the coloured lights. Councillor Taylor, you're next in line in the blue hand queue. Please go ahead.
Yes, we're in the dark, both metaphorically and physically, were it not for the new Christmas tree on the lawn. I think councillor Pedrick makes the same proposal that I did. So on that basis, if his, on that basis, perhaps what he has said is effectively seconding what I have said. But I think it's probably time we went to a proposal now, Chair, if you would agree.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. I do agree. It's just a blue hand keep being raised. And I keep being requested to let people speak. Chair, I mean, Andrew, town clerk, what do you think? Do you think we should go for a vote, have a look at the proposals again, or should I continue to let people speak?
Chairman, it's in your purview as to whether or not you feel there's been sufficient debate on the matter. I might suggest allowing the mover of the original proposal to come back in case something has changed as a result of the debate that's gone on so far, but the decision rests with you, Chairman.
Thank you, thank you. I am aware of the time and the amount on the agenda. Councillor Wiggley, you moved the original proposal. Would you like to speak on that, please?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I mean, there's two things going on here. First of all, I think it's imperative that we get these lights switched back on. But I also think, and again, listening to the further information, that the extra charge for actually replacing 120 light bulbs with probably old-fashioned technology is ridiculous. So I think we have to say, let's get these lights switched on. We know 120 light bulbs are not working. We've already forked up the money to get it going, and they are being overly cautious in making these, replacing the 120 existing lamps. So yes, a few bulbs will not be working. But let's get them switched back on and then talk about how we take it forward. So I would like to change my proposal, so we get these lights switched back on. We pay the agreed monies that CAC agreed, and that we say we don't need this work to happen unless there is anything that is safety critical, in which case that has to be done. But you know, just because it's replacing 120 bulbs, that is not critical to getting the lights back on. So let's get on with it. Let's do it. And let's get these lights on. That's the key thing.
Thank you, councillor Wiggley, and I'm happy to second that. I'm happy to support that. So councillors, can we now go to a vote? We've got that proposal seconded by me. All those in favour of that proposal, please raise a hand.
That's unanimous, Chairman.
Excellent, thank you. Should we now then go to part B about the agreeing that you begin negotiations with Teambridge District Council? Should we consider that part B as well?
I think, Chairman, it's been included in many members' debate this evening. So if you're happy to go to a vote on whether or not you'd like me to find out what kind of proposals would come our way, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you, councillor. So do we have a proposal and a second to that, please? Councillor Wiggley, councillor Taylor, are you proposing and seconding?
Councillor Wiggley, I think wishes to speak.
Councillor Wiggley, please go ahead.
Absolutely, you find out, but absolutely not to commit at this stage.
Absolutely.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Councillor Taylor, were you seconding that? Okay, thank you. And does that also include the strongly worded letter that I think councillor Dawson originally suggested? And I think councillor Pedrick suggested as well. So all those in favour of that, please, please raise a hand.
Thank you, Chairman. That's unanimous.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, councillors, for that discussion. Thank you. So now we move on to item number 13 on our agenda, which is to consider adopting the following protocol documents. These are policy documents. So the first one is the Protocol for the Formation and Operation of Working Groups. And the second one is the Dawlish Town Council Civic Events Order of Precedence Protocol. Have all members had a chance to have a look at this? Do any councillors wish to make any comments? Councillor Prowse, you had your blue hand raised. Please go ahead.
I can hear you, councillor.
Right, okay. Am I muted?
We can hear you, yeah.
Yes.
Well, I wasn't going to speak on the first part. I was going to speak on the second part. As for many years now, I appear to have been the guru on which way we walk, process, or whatever you care to say. I did speak to the town clerk, wondering where he got this list from. And I would like to propose that it's the wrong way round. As we all know, the Lord Lieutenant is always last. Whatever we do, the Lord Lieutenant is last, because the Lord Lieutenant represents the Queen and royalty does not bring in the procession. It comes at the end. That's what I'd like to say. So basically, this is the wrong way round. Town clerk, Andrew, would you like to mention something?
I think, Chairman, I take your point, but I think if you, depending on which way you look at the list, you could argue that the back of the queue is at the top. So I'd be happy to take it that way.
Well, as long as we remember, as long as we remember when it comes to these civic things, and Angie in the past has commented to me that if we're honoured with the Lord Lieutenant, he will be at the end.
Thank you, councillor Prowse. Thank you, Andrew. Councillor... Thank you councillor Prowse. Thank you Andrew. Um, councillor Linda Pedrick, did you wish to comment?
Um, I was going to comment on the formation and operation of working groups. I think that we should still, as a council, vote on what members of the public goes on working groups if they're going to be on there from start to finish. I don't have a problem with having a member of the public who's an expert in something that comes and gives us advice. Um, but I think we've got to be, we've got to be open and transparent and as a full council, we've got to be happy with the working groups because we have to be the ones that say yes or no to what's, what's going on there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Pedrick. Councillor Morehead, you're next in line. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yes, all very interesting, most of which happens anyway, but item six, I, I would like to query, um, with the clerk please, or whoever. Uh, this item six mentions, um, the numbers of public vacancies. We're told that a working group should consist of no fewer than two councillors and recommended not more than five. Well, I think that's always been followed. But it says the number of public vacancies must also be advised at the time of the group's inception. Unless I've missed it, I can't see anywhere whether there is a recommended minimum or maximum number or percentage of a group who should be from members of the public. And since virtually all the working groups, well, as far as I know, all working groups are investigating or researching something on behalf of the public and which is likely to be funded by the members of the public through their local council tax. Uh, I think I've always felt that it's very important that, um, representatives of the public are on these groups. I'm just wondering, should there perhaps be uh, a number of members of the public in relation to the number of councillors on a group?
There's, there's no definitive answer, Chairman. It's up to members if they wish to put a set month number in there. Members of the public don't have to be on working groups. There's no requirement for them to be on, um, working groups. But they are perfectly able to be on working groups if members wish at the time of the group's inception. So if, if, uh, the meeting wishes to have that inserted, uh, I've got no problem with that. And if they want to leave it as it is to be taken each time one is set up, that's fine as well.
Okay, thank you Andrew. Thank you. Um, councillor John Pedrick, you're next in line, please.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, it's paragraph seven on the, um, um, formation and operation of working groups. Uh, I'll just read it to you, just in case some members don't happen to have in front of them. Uh, members of the public were invited to join by the working group itself, following an application process. The working group will manage this and ultimately appoint members of the public. Now, does this mean that we won't advertise for members of the public to join committees? The wording suggests that the committee members will contact members of the public that they are acquainted with and suggest that they apply and join the committee. This isn't, as been suggested earlier, perhaps, open and transparent. In, in the past, I mean, full council have always decided who represents the general public, as indeed we decide who represents the council in the working groups as well. Thank you.
Chairman, I think the wording invited could be changed because it does later go on to talk about an application process which would be advertised. So, um, I think those words could be inserted in there, but yes, I would envisage it being advertised.
Thank you.
Thank you Andrew. Thank you. Um, councillor Wiggly, you've got a blue hand. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, a couple of things interesting. First of all, I'd like to thank the clerk for pulling all these together. These have long been missing from our constitution and are actually needed. And it's become obvious over the years that I've been on the council that we have a number amongst us who remember perhaps previous versions or remember things, uh, from a different place perhaps. So as far as I'm aware, in the last, certainly the years I've been on the council, there haven't been any, uh, any written, um, rules for how we form working groups and how we co-opt non-councillors onto them. We have, in my experience, done all sorts of different processes and we have brought external people onto working groups, both through, in the form of the neighbourhood plan, we had a public thing at full council. But in other working groups, we have pulled people on at the working group level. So I think it's entirely right that we have this clarified and written down. But it is an incorrect, uh, um, uh, assertion that we have always taken working group membership at full council level. That's not how it has been. So I think this is a very good way of doing it. I think where it would be required to take any external representation onto a working group, that clearly would be written into the terms of reference of that working group. And those terms of reference always come back to full council. So full council still has a control on this, however this ends up. But I think the proposal put forward here, uh, certainly in, in paragraph seven, is eminently sensible. And I think it worked, it's very workable and I would like to propose that we accept the entirety of these documents as they are set out.
Thank you councillor Wiggly.
Could I just clarify, Chair, whether councillor Wiggly would be happy to take councillor John Pedrick's point about the process being advertised as opposed to invited?
Councillor Wiggly, do you, do you go with that?
Uh, yes, yes, indeed.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, and, um, clearly with whichever way up one wishes to read the order of precedence, which is, is nice to have that written down as well.
Thank you very much councillor Wiggly. Thank you. So that's a proposal from you councillor Taylor, you've got a blue hand raised. All these blue hands tonight, but you're not cold. Please go ahead.
Uh, I raise my hand to second councillor Wiggly's proposal.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So we've got a proposal seconded to go with, to approve both of these, um, policy documents, um, with the clarifications as agreed with, with Andrew, our town clerk. So please, can I ask for a show of hands to approve, please? Members, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. That's unanimous.
Perfect. Thank you. So we are starting to get there now. So now agenda item 16 on the agenda. So this is to note the, um, oh, hang on, have I missed it? Have I missed?
Item fourteen, Chairman.
Sorry. Item number fourteen on the agenda. It's all these papers. Um, homelessness working group. So this is to consider establishing and appointing to a homelessness working group in collaboration with the local neighbourhood police team.
Chairman, I believe we have the local neighbourhood police team, um, joining the meeting on the telephone. I didn't know if you'd like to invite them to speak before taking members' questions.
Okay, yes, I will do. So please, could I ask councillors if we can suspend standing orders to invite our police to speak? Please raise a hand.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. So please, can I invite our neighbourhood police team to, to go ahead and speak?
Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor, councillors and town clerk. Thanks very much for your time. I'll just make, uh, this very quick because I know, uh, your, your time's very precious. Really, this is all, uh, to basically form a strategy between town council and the police to assist the homeless and that is it in a nutshell. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you. Um, so thank you for attending our meeting this evening. Um, can I ask councillors if we can reinstate standing orders while we go to discussion? Please raise a hand. Okay, thank you. So councillor Martin Wiggly, you're first in line with blue hands. Please go ahead.
Uh, thank you very much, Chair. Um, I obviously should have read this more carefully because this does fall under my portfolio at Teambridge, so I will not be, uh, taking part in this conversation or voting on this because it is my direct responsibility within my portfolio. However, I will pre, preclude this with one request that you include Teambridge in this, uh, um, partnership so that we have a consistent view, uh, between Teambridge and Dawlish. And I will now withdraw from this, uh, this, this item.
Thank you councillor Wiggly. Thank you. Um, councillor Lisa Main, please go ahead.
Um, I'm just wondering whether there is the need to form another working party when we've already got a group of, um, advocates, myself, Linda Pedrick and Rosie Dawson, along with the town clerk who work with the police. I'm just wondering if this could become part of that strategy. Um, I understand that every time we go working party, then nine times out of 10, it takes part of, um, I, the town clerk or Angie or somebody has to come along. So I'm just wondering whether this is something we can do. I know we've spoken with, um, Mark Hogan before about this. Um, I'm just concerned, I just want to know other people's views on this.
Madam Mayor, may I come in?
Yes, can I just briefly ask for a show of hands to suspend standing orders again? Okay, please go ahead, PC Hogan. Please go ahead.
Uh, apologies councillors. Uh, just to pick up on, uh, councillor Wiggly's point, uh, and apologies, that was my fault. We would include Teambridge outreach as part of, uh, the strategy. Would that meet councillor Wiggly's requirements?
Councillor Wiggly, please go ahead.
Chairman, I think councillor Wiggly's declared an appendix B interest, so he's unlikely to answer, but I should imagine that would
Okay.
Accord with what he was initially saying.
Thank you. But I, I, I think, I think that would, I think that for me, that would be good to include the Teambridge Outreach Officer Two as well. Thank you, um, PC Hogan. Are there any questions for, other questions for PC Hogan before we reinstate standing orders, please? Please raise a hand if anybody has any other questions.
Does councillor Linda Pedrick have a hand? Uh, councillor Morehead, Chairman.
Councillor Linda Pedrick, please go ahead.
No, that's for when we're discussing it.
Oh, sorry, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Morehead, did you have a question for PC Hogan? Please, please raise your.
I think Chairman, she, she's the same as councillor Pedrick.
Okay, thank you. So now I shall ask councillors to raise a hand to reinstate standing orders. Perfect, thank you. So councillor Linda Pedrick, please go ahead.
Just a couple of things. Um, I have actually gone on the group as the Timbridge District Council rep. So I could very easily liaise with Timbridge. Um, anything that needed to go back there, I could take it back. But I think from, from what I understand, and, and Mark might tell me if I'm wrong, for us to be able to do anything with this, it, it's not really up to three councillors. I think we could possibly do with having a, a little meeting with them in part two, um, at the next, next council meeting for them to talk to you as a council. Because if they want us as a council to develop a strategy with the police, then I think it needs to be, in the first instance, it needs to be the whole council that has input into it and then the smaller group can then take it on board and move forward with it with the police. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pedrick. Councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, it sounds a good idea on the surface. I agree with councillor Pedrick that it needs more thought and in depth. I also take on board what councillor Lisa Main was saying. Um, and wonder if there is some way of managing this without having a, and yet another working group. We have five and virtually everyone means that a member of the staff, and I'm talking about overloading on the staff now, has to prepare agendas, host the meetings and prepare minutes and follow anything up. And I think our staff do a remarkable job as it is. So if there's some way that we can fulfil the needs and, and the aspirations without yet another full working group, I would like us to think about it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morehead. Councillor Terry Laver, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, well, I, I'm totally opposed to councillor Morehead's, uh, point of view. Um, I, I, I do agree with her, you know, it does set officer time up and so on, but that's the way life is. I think it's important at a time when homelessness is such a, a high profile issue in this country, that you'll be sending out a proper signal for us to have a special group looking at that, working closely with the police and others. Um, and I, I think if it, if it takes time, it takes time, but I look, most working groups have a, have a short life, really. They do a job and they, and they, they dissolve. So we're not necessarily going to have five working groups, whatever. Um, I, 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 I'm all for the group. I'm all for it being a separate group and I'm all for it for being a high profile group. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Laver and I, I, I support what you say. Um, and I, I, I support that. Um, so councillor Linda Pedrick, do you have anything new, new to say? Please go ahead.
I would like to respond to the things that have been said previously as I'm on the, on the group. Um, I understand what councillor Laver's saying and agree with him to some extent. Uh, and I also understand what councillor Morehead said. But I do think that the capacity is there in the group that we've already got because we have been talking about homelessness and we have been, um, discussing various things. And as I said, I, I took all these leaflets around the shops today and we've spoke, I've spoken to people about it. Um, maybe we add homelessness onto the title. But initially, I think it's got to be a discussion with full council in part two, just so as we can then direct that group into how we want them to move forward. But I do think it does sit with the group that we've already got. Otherwise, I would agree with councillor Laver. But I do genuinely think after having two or three meetings that it, it could sit in that group because that's mainly what we've been talking about.
Thank you councillor Pedrick. Councillor Dawson, do you wish to go ahead?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to, I was supporting what, um, Terry, councillor Terry Laver was saying. But I, I also just wanted to point out that there's been numerous occasions where this council has said that they would really like to have more input from the local policing team. And I think that homelessness is obviously having, um, as a, a big, a bigger impact on the town um, than we had realised if the police are now coming to us asking to form some sort of group, uh, to sort these issues. So I would be thinking if we have the police knocking at our door, wanting to create a strategy and, uh, and wanting to help people and to create a, a community where, um, these things are dealt with compassionately, then, um, I think we should be grasping that really, that opportunity.
Thank you councillor Dawson and I very much agree with you there. Okay, um, we are running out of time. Um, so quickly, please councillor Prowse, go ahead.
Um, I was, I, I've just been listening to all this because I've not been part of this group. Um, and I would say that, um, I agree with most, uh, councillor Linda Pedrick and councillor Rosie Dawson. And I think it would be of great value to us as a council if we did have, uh, a meeting, a part two, in which we all discuss some idea of the problem and what we're talking about, because not all of us have an in-depth knowledge of that. And I would be very happy to propose, um, in some way that we have a part two, if it, if it needs a part two, in which all the council are involved, uh, next January and then we can go forward from there. the council are involved next January and then we can go forward from there and have a working party on this. I just think we need more information. That's my proposal.
Thank you councillor Pals. Councillor, councillor, who's next in the queue? Councillor Lisa Main, did you have your blue hand raised? Please quickly, because we're running out of time.
What I, all I want to say is, this group is up and running and the members of the group are aware that homelessness is a big part of working with the police. And I think it, yes, it'd be a fantastic opportunity to get a part two and the police could brief the rest of the councillors on what's actually going on. And I think you would find out then that there's not actually a need for another group. So I propose, I know you've had a proposal from councillor Pals, that we carry on as we are until we've had a part two and keep homelessness as part of the group that was already set up. And that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you councillor Main. So are you referring to the police advocates? Okay, okay, thank you. And councillor Heath, please go ahead quickly.
Thank you, it is unmuted now. Yes, I'd like to second that as a proposal. I think at the moment, having more groups is probably not the best thing. And as this other group seems to have quite a grip on it, although I obviously don't know the details, not sitting on it, but they seem to be quite confident. And if they feel confident, I don't think we should just push them aside and ignore them. So I think we should at least give them the opportunity, maybe have a limiting time, we'll say three months, if they feel after that they're not able to cope, they need more resources from another group. And I'm sure they would ask for a separate group. Obviously Linda Pedrick might disagree with that or she might say absolutely, I don't know. But it seems quite sensible, rather than us debating for hours, having another group, when there's a group half doing it already, they're all up and running. And if they can't cope with it, then perhaps we should include that, that in three months' time, if they find that they do need more resources, they will have a separate group. And that's how I would second it. But obviously the amendment would have to come from the proposer.
Right, thank you, thank you. I'm a bit confused because when we approved the police advocates, their role didn't include this, working out the homelessness strategy with the police and with the Teambridge outreach officer. I can't remember that that was included in what we agreed then. Councillor Wrigley, you've got your blue hand raised, please go ahead.
Yes, my apologies. I'd just like to ask, well, there were two questions of clarification. One, I think you've just clarified, Chair, thank you about this group, whether that was the police advocates or whether it was a group I wasn't aware of. My second question is, are we talking about homelessness or are we talking about rough sleepers? Because the two things are very different.
Good point.
Thank you. Could I, could I ask PC Hogan to clarify there, please? And we, we suspend standing orders momentarily to ask PC Hogan? Thank you, please go ahead, PC Hogan, thank you.
Hi, excuse me. Yes, this is the whole concept of a strategy to have that discussion via hopefully the police advocates, who will then speak to the other councillors if necessary to discuss whether it is homelessness or rough sleepers and form that strategy. It's all about communication and moving as fast as we can with that.
Right, okay, thank you, thank you. Councillor Wrigley, does that answer your question?
Not entirely, because the two things are very different. You know, a youngster who's sofa surfing and hasn't got a home to go to, but is staying quite safe within other people's areas is homeless. But somebody sleeping in a tent on Lehman is rough sleeping. So the two things really are very different and we need to be quite careful on this. Homelessness is a massive problem and of a scale that is yet undetermined and very rarely has police involvement. Rough sleeping is a very different sort of problem and that may be what is being asked here. But I'm just a little concerned that the council is straying outside of its remit.
Thank you councillor Wrigley. So I think I understand from what you're saying that appointing the working group to look at it as a whole for homelessness and rough sleeping, would that, and collaborating then with the neighbourhood police team, was that what PC Hogan is, is looking for, is being investigated here? Can we quickly suspend standing orders to ask PC Hogan to reply there, please? Please go ahead.
Hi, yes, we can keep it to rough sleeping if that assists the scenario. Obviously, within policing, we go across a wide variety of topics and none of them are off the books for us. So it's within the police advocate scheme, those conversations have got to be had. And I don't want to discount homelessness altogether because that may be a topic that does come up. However, I'm acutely aware that the town council would not want to take part or attempt to service that arena and we would most certainly not expect you to take part in that arena.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you. So we quickly reinstate standing orders and I do need to ask councillors to approve extending this minute, this meeting for thirty minutes only. So we've got a lot to get through in the next thirty minutes. Please raise a hand if you approve extending.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, so first of all councillor Lisa Main, please keep it brief, please go ahead.
I didn't know that I had my hand raised. I raised it a while back, I made a proposal. I don't know if I've got a seconded for that or not.
Right, thank you. Andrew, did we have a note of the proposals?
Chairman, I don't believe there was a seconded to councillor Main's proposal, which I think was to use the group that already exists, which is the councillor advocates. I can't remember if I'm honest, Chairman, there was another proposal that suggested that you defer the decision until January and have an item in part two to discuss the issue to gain further information.
I did second it.
Ah, there we are, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the proposal from councillor Main was to go with the groups, the group of police advocates to work on this and to bring it back to the agenda in January.
Yeah, I think councillor Pals is looking to speak, Chairman.
Councillor Pals, please go ahead.
I made the original proposal that we discuss this in a part two at the next council. I've been trying to make an amendment to that, which takes in councillor Main's original proposal, that we continue with the advocacy as it is. But I would like added into that that while they continue with their work, that we have an update in a part two so that we understand it more in January. I was keep trying to say that. Do I have a seconded to that amendment or whatever we now going to call it?
I think councillor Mary Laver is indicating she is seconding.
Yes, okay, thank you councillor Laver. So then we've got the proposal, we've got the seconded. Do we take a vote on that then, please?
If you're happy to, Chairman.
Okay, councillor Terry Laver, did you wish to quickly speak?
Very quickly, yes. I was also going to second that, stressing the importance of clarifying the terms of reference of the group, whatever it is. We've already got something else needs to be discussed about whether it's homelessness or sleeping rough and that needs to be defined before we go any further.
I, Chairman, if I may, I think that might be the appropriate time at the January meeting, which you've been given more information. And if members so wish to have a working group, then that would be the time to define the scope of the terms of reference, yeah.
Right, okay. So we're voting on that then to bring it back to the January meeting. So all those in favour, please, we've got the proposal, we've got the seconded, all those in favour, please raise a hand.
That's unanimous, Chairman, thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. Thank you to our neighbourhood police team, PC Hogan, thank you.
Thanks very much, goodbye.
Bye, thank you. So we now move on to item number fifteen, Helping Dawlish, to receive a note of verbal update, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Just very quickly to say the group Helping Dawlish is still meeting weekly at the moment as we come out of the second lockdown. The different organisations are facing different challenges. We're currently as a group preparing the Christmas hugs in the bag scheme, which is eighty bags that will be going out on a referral basis to either isolated individuals or families. And it's been a most uplifting experience because we've had a lot of offers from local retailers and others to actually help put things in the bag. We've also had quite a lot of donations. And last weekend, there was an online busking session to raise money for Helping Dawlish. The other main bit of news concerns the Dawlish food larder, the larder. It's now got a second collection point in the Dawlish funeral care. They asked for a collection point and the larder is also part of the South Devon Food Alliance, which has recently launched a website. And today, we submitted a video to Devon Communities, a short video about what the group has been doing as they are looking for groups to hopefully be shortlisted to go on Countryfile. So we've entered the group as we believe we'd like to give that a chance. That's a very quick update from Helping Dawlish.
That's excellent. Thank you very much, Angie. And thank you very much to everybody who's involved in Helping Dawlish and for all the excellent work that they've been doing and that they have planned over Christmas. I like the sound of the hug in a bag. So very good luck with that. Thank you for that update. Any comments from councillors or can we vote to approve that update, please? Okay, so all in favour of noting and approving?
Thank you, Chairman, unanimous.
Thank you. So then, item number sixteen, conclusion of the external audit, which has been circulated pages thirty-one to thirty-four. So we are noting this. Andrew, would you like to?
Yeah, Chairman, it's simply, this is the outcome of our external audit, which I referred to at the previous meeting, that we were still awaiting. It had to be with us by the end of November. We've now had it. It's a completely clean audit, there's no comments, there's no adverse comments. Where they say other matters not affecting our opinion, which we draw the attention of authority, is none. So it's a real commendable report, especially to Yola, the finance officer and everybody else involved, including yourselves in managing our accounts. And it's a good clean bill of health for the last year. Thank you.
That's excellent. Thank you very much and thank you very much to you and to Yola and all the office team for all the hard work in getting us this far. Thank you. Councillor Wrigley, you've got your blue hand raised, I think. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I would like to thank the finance officer for all our hard work and the clerk for getting us a nice clean bill of health from the auditors. And I'd like to propose that we accept it as set out.
Thank you councillor Wrigley. Councillor Pedrick, are you seconding? Please go ahead.
Yes, I am. Sorry, pardon me, Madam Mayor.
Please go ahead.
Thank you very much, yes. Yes, I'm happy to second it. I was actually going to propose it, but councillor Wrigley beat me to it. Yes, and congratulations and many thanks to the staff for all their hard work. Thank you. So I'm happy to second it as set out.
Thank you very much councillor Pedrick, thank you. So all those in favour of approving these, please raise a hand.
Thank you, Chairman, unanimous.
Excellent, thank you. So we've now concluded part one of our meeting. Thank you very much to all members of the public who have been joining us, watching live on Facebook. This is at the point of the meeting where we say goodbye to you and we stop streaming live on Facebook because we now enter part two, which is private. So thank you for joining us. Happy Christmas.